15 regular meeting for the Fullerton City Council. Please rise for the invocation. Heavenly Father, we're gathered here to do the business of the people. We ask that you bestow upon us your wisdom and strength. In your name, amen.
Amen.
And I believe Councilmember Whitaker will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, as we near our Veterans Day commemoration in the city of Fullerton, let's think about those who have given their all for this country. Hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Mayor Seaborn.
Present.
Mayor Protem Fitzgerald.
Here.
Councilmember Chafee.
Here.
Councilmember Florrie.
Here.
Councilmember Whitaker.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, any closed session report?
Yeah, there's two reports through this evening. The first is the report regarding rejected proposal. The Fullerton Firefighters Association rejected a city of Fullerton package proposal number four dated October 12th, 2015. The city council in closed session authorized the settlement of the case of Amber Sanders versus the city of Fullerton on a three positive vote, one negative vote. Mr. Whitaker and the mayor, Mr. Seaborn, was absent, approved a settlement in the amount of $85,000 to the plaintiff and $30,000 to the medical lien holder.
Thank you. At this time, any ex parte communications from council members?
None.
Okay, no communications. This time we'll move into presentations, and I would now like to ask the Hiddle family, This is truly one of those bittersweet moments where it's great to be able to honor somebody and recognize them for their literally decades and decades of service to this community and to the city. And it's sad that we have now lost Dennis Hiddle, but we are presenting this resolution to the family. And I would like to read through the various "whereas's" to give those that didn't know Dennis Hiddle a little flavor. Whereas the city of Fullerton has been fortunate to have benefited from the work of Dennis Hiddle, who committed his life serving the community and its citizens many times over through countless efforts spent as a city employee and as a volunteer. And whereas for over 42 years, Dennis Hiddle labored tirelessly in behalf of the residents and businesses of Fullerton by serving as a member of the city's Public Works Department. And whereas, prior to working with the city of Fullerton, Dennis was a Vietnam-era veteran of the United States Air Force, serving from 1961 to 1965. And whereas, after his retirement from the city, Dennis continued to invest in the people of Fullerton by serving as the president of the Senior Citizens Club. And as a board member for the city of Fullerton Sister City Association. Whereas, by his commitment to others, Dennis Hiddle's life offered daily testimony to the truth of the poet Emerson's words, "The only gift is a portion of thyself." Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Greg Seaborn, Mayor of the city of Fullerton, in behalf of the entire Fullerton City Council and the citizens of Fullerton, do hereby recognize Dennis Hiddle on his legacy of service to the people of Fullerton and to thank his family for sharing Dennis with us for so many years of selfless dedication to the city and to the citizens of Fullerton. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the mayor and city council, specifically the city staff in, you know, in planning and holding our memorial service at the Fullerton Community Everyone was very helpful. And council, Mayor Protem Fitzgerald was there. There is everyone from the senior center and friends and family. And Tim, my uncle Tim Marsh, who also lived with my father. And I think that's, I just wanted to thank city staff and the, you know, especially the fire department and the police department. And I know my father would, he was, he was, he was a Republican, but he was also, he was also into making sure the city staff or the city employees were taken care of. So, please support your police and fire and city employees on your upcoming budgets.
Thank you all for coming. Who came in honor of my dad tonight and some of his friends from the senior center. I remember my dad actually started working here when I, I think when I was, when-
Before you were born.
Yeah, before I was born, to pay for me to be born. So, and the flagpole over at the police department is where I learned how to fold the flag because when I was a little girl, I helped my dad put the flag up at that pole. And he taught me respect for America and our flag and honoring our flag at that time. And my brother and I have been places in the city that due to liability reasons, at the city building, on top of the building, that they wouldn't allow kids today. We've had some special tours back in the day. But my dad loved Fullerton. He loved his city and he loved giving to the city and the people of Fullerton. And his favorite restaurants, Ruta Bagoras and Kimmy's and also the Night Owl and just some places that he loved to hang out, that they were like extended family to him as well. And just, thank you, Mayor. Oh, it's my brother. Thank you, Mayor and city council for this honor.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, come on back up.
Anybody wishing to speak to the city council on matters that would normally be before the city council but are not on the agenda may come forward now. Or if there's a matter on the consent calendar that you would like to have pulled for discussion, we can do that at this time.
Good evening, Barry Levinson, longtime Fullerton resident. Tonight, I'd like to discuss what I consider to be a few of the problems with the Fullerton Downtown Core and Corridor special plan that was first brought up here last year but not voted upon. First, if passed, it would allow up to eight-story high-rise, high-density housing along almost all the major corridors within Fullerton. Second, it turns over the power to vote on individual development projects from the city council, where it belongs, to one unelected man, city manager Joe Felts. Third, there really isn't a good reason that the city council majority would hand over their power and also their responsibility to Mr. Felts to decide on an unknown number of future development projects. If they really think that is such a good idea in general, maybe the council should vote to disband itself and allow Mr. Felts full reign over all city issues. Fourth, if you think traffic is awful now, wait until you add thousands of cars with no improvement in our roads. And the $1 million plan that was put together on Downtown Core and Corridor, in fact, did not include any improvements in roads except for, I think, one or two roundabouts that's really going to help. Fifth, why would our city leadership push for this plan when the citizens of Fullerton have to cut back drastically now and in the future on their current water uses or else face major fines? Where is the water supposed to come from? And why would they be pushing for this when our streets, water mains, and sewers are in such great disrepair and certainly unable to handle 50,000 to 100,000 additional residents and thousands of additional cars? The answer, ladies and gentlemen, money, power, and special interests. Each unit built would provide the city right up front with $11,700 in fees, taxes, for starters. One high-rise building with 150 units would bring the city almost $1.8 million from that one fee tax alone. The city has built, has a built-in deficit of close to $3 million over the next two years, and yet the city, rather than tightening their fiscal belts, prefer to turn Fullerton into a high-density, high-rise nightmare. Therefore, the entire burden of this city's past and current fiscal mismanagement will not be a shared sacrifice going forward, but will fall on existing residents vis-à-vis a greatly diminished quality of life. Now, lastly, I just want to make one more comment concerning the Genaca report. The city council has a fiduciary responsibility, in my opinion, to discuss the conclusions of the report, that the key officers involved did in fact break many Fullerton police and procedures on July 5th, 2011. The council's silence, may I finish? I have one more sentence. The council's silence, in my opinion, aids and abets the efforts of those dismissed officers in their claims that they were wrongly dismissed. This places the Fullerton taxpayer at risk to pay those dismissed officers huge amounts of settlement money in the future. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Seaborn, and members of the city council and staff. I have three questions. What special arrangements is the city pla- yeah, okay. Good evening again. What special arrangements is the city planning to prepare for the pending El Nino? Kind of good question. Recently, the city of LA passed an ordinance regarding private drones, which restricts flying above 500 feet within five miles of airports, we have an airport, within 25 feet of another person, but failed to pass an ordinance restricting use over wildfires, et cetera. The governor vetoed that. Where does the city of Fullerton stand in regards to a similar ordinance? Third question. At the same time, city of LA passed an ordinance allowing private citizens to own bee hives with certain requirements. This is an answer to the major epidemic destroying the bee population called Colony Collapse Syndrome. When is Fullerton going to change their laws allowing private citizens to own bee colonies? Shouldn't we be doing our part to aid this situation? I don't have to remind you what benefits bees do in pollinating our fruits and vegetables. Last Tuesday, this week, last week, I went to Ollie, like I usually do. And in our facility, we have this breezeway, and it was this nest of bees, thousands of bees, just, not a nest, just a colony. And people, and they were protecting the queen and everything, and they're probably, and we were told, they were probably going to go and, finding another place to nest and everything. I came back Thursday, and I learned that the Cal State Fullerton maintenance department decided they were a hazard and killed them. We have the Fullerton Arboretum right there that has hives, closely connected to the university, but nobody ever thought about that. So, why don't we start thinking about things like that? And I need my rain barrels filled up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I just want to pull two for discussion.
Okay. Pull number two. Next speaker.
Ladies and gentlemen, the council, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, and ladies and gentlemen watching on television, my name is Joan Briano. I'm a Fullerton resident, and I'm also the site administrator of the Fullerton Informer.com. Just a bit of housekeeping, there were some mischaracterizations of what I said in the Fullerton Observer with respect to the cancer epidemic. I did state that it was a medical mafia fraud. What I did not say is that it's caused by sunscreen. I said it's caused by cancer viruses that were in the polio vaccines. I want to repeat that. I also want to repeat that it is caused by vitamin D deficiency because not enough people are getting sunlight through their eyes as a result of the contact lenses and sunglasses they're wearing. That is the common denominator in cancer, especially breast cancer in women. The other environmental factors are magnified by the underlying vitamin D deficiency. I think it's deplorable that somebody would make a joke out of something so serious. I know people who have no moms right now because they succumb to this illness, and they were so concerned with their oil-of-the-lay appearance that they deprived themselves of the life-giving frequencies that God hung in the sky to keep us alive. Mr. Levinson tonight talked about the 250,000-pound elephant in this room, and I'd just like to touch on it. Last night was quite a night for the phony Fullerton Republican establishment, the people that are supporting Ms. Fitzgerald and some of the others, like Mr. Nelson, endorsed Young Kim for another run in the Assembly after she brought back redevelopment, attacked private property rights with the asset forfeiture seizure party that she wants to take part in, as well as the forced vaccination legislation that is a blatant attack on parental rights and our rights as human beings to be sovereign, free creatures. The issue tonight at hand in this council chamber is the Downtown Core Corridor project. It's a big racket, it's an open-ended racket, it's a power transfer to turn you all into rubber stamps. Development's going to destroy this town. Proper development is what keeps towns going. But we don't need eight-story tilt-ups, we don't need another 20,000, 30,000 people without road repairs, without the infrastructure repairs. We don't have the water, we don't have the roads. What we've got is a bunch of people that want to keep the trough filled up in the city council so that the goodies can keep getting handed out, so we can keep the pensions going, we can keep the salary increases going, we can keep our buddies that work at the credit unions happy, we can keep our pals that are selling real estate happy, at the expense and to the detriment of the taxpayers and the residents. I think if the people realize the scope and the magnitude of what is going on here, I think they'd be out in the streets with pitchforks. Of course, then again, I don't know what it takes to get people to act anymore. I do think that every one of you on this council that has someone on the planning commission that green-lighted this thing ought to remove those appointees immediately for what they just about handed you and about what they've done to potentially turn the city into a disaster that's really just three votes away right now. So that DCCSP needs to go, people need to open their eyes. It is the end of Fullerton, as we know it is Agenda 21, folks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay, at this time, we'll close the public comments, bring it back to the council for city council and successor agency communications, and start with our city manager, based on public comments, and I think you had a couple of other items that you wanted to discuss.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In response to the request for Mr. Package on drones, our airport director, Brendan O'Reilly, is working on that as we speak. Yes, the airport has the FAA regulations, which will be of significance to Fullerton as we consider restrictions on drones in Fullerton. So we expect him to bring something forward in the next several weeks. In regard to a couple of other things from past meetings, I wanted to note that the Orange County Board of Supervisors will be meeting on November 17th at 11:00 a.m. to consider the proposed shelter, what's known as the Kramer Site. It's in Anaheim. I'm sure the supervisor's website, the county website, has that information as we speak. The opening of the Armory in Fullerton, the cold-weather shelters, it's known, recursed in Valencia, they have a tentative opening date of November 30th. I wanted to note that is a couple of weeks later than normal, but the county staff has been monitoring the weather and with the prediction of heavy rains extending into the spring and the late spring, there are restrictions on how many weeks they can use the shelter. So they've made a determination to start a little bit later, so they have some surplus dates in April and potentially early May if the rainy season extends. So that's the reasoning behind that. The West Coyote Hills project was recommended for approval by the planning commission a week or so ago. It has been appealed, and then we've agendized that for November 17th, your next regularly scheduled meeting. And a couple of other housekeeping items, November 17th meeting, I've asked Public Works to come forward with what we're calling the Fullerton Prepared Plan for the El Nino season and the heavy rains. So it's a comprehensive overview of what each department is responsible for and some of those extra measures that we're taking, actually starting several weeks ago, commenced the plan. But this is to provide assurances to the community that we are prepared, as well as such things as where they can get sandbags and some other assistance if it's needed. The Wilshire Bike Boulevard is opening in probably a week or so. It'll be, it'll be open, and we don't know exactly, they're out installing right now, but within the next probably week to 10 days. And my last item is, I think it was two meetings ago, we had public comments from several concerned citizens. I'll generally say it's the Pacific Drive School, BASK in Valencia for increased lighting. Happy to report that Public Works has increased greatly the wattage in the bulbs on the four streetlights at that crossing. Also concluded the traffic study, and it meets the standards for a, call it a light bar it's referred to. We have them at Rolling Hill School. They're, provide notice to the motorists that a crossing guard, or a crossing is there. So that'll be reviewed by TNCC, and then the installation can be planned. So that was a follow-up on that former item. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I'll start over on my right. Councilmember Chafee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to reiterate some of what Councilmember Whitaker said about our veterans. We will be having a Veterans Day Parade next Wednesday, I'm out tomorrow, I'm sorry, a week from Wednesday, on November 11. Starts in the Downtown Plaza and winds up at Oak Crest Park, and it's a great time for all of us to remember the veterans. Includes, among other things, laying a wreath at the flagpole in the park, remembering those who gave their lives. My wife and I attended the Friends of Jazz Oktoberfest at the Elks Club. Friends of Jazz raises money to keep music education in the schools, and also provides scholarships, among others, to college students that continue with their music education. The Fullerton Technology Foundation had an incredible gala at the Arboretum. I'm sure they must have raised over $100,000. They use that to bring technology to the schools, such as giving students iPads, and it's a great augmentation what the school is able to do. And lastly, I'd like to give a thank you to the NGA, Fullerton National, I'm sorry, Needle Guild of America for Fullerton. They provide new clothes for needy kids and adults in our community, and for doing that for over 60 years. And this is their annual membership meeting they have, they are doing a great job in continuing with that. And that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Florrie.
Last Friday, I had the pleasure of going on the state water project tour up to Northern California and the Oroville Dam, the bank's pumping station, and there is a huge educational component in it, and it made me understand for the first time what the real connection was between fixing the delta and our water reliability in Southern California. It is referred to as the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, and it includes building two enormous 40-inch-wide tunnels from up above the delta, underneath the delta, in order to stabilize it, and then bringing that water to Southern California. As it stands right now, something like 33 million acre-feet of water go out through San Francisco Bay annually, and that is necessary in order to protect the, in order to keep the salinity of the ocean out of the delta area. But those levees, if you have never visited the delta area, it is an unbelievably interesting place. To my likes, it's much like being in the deep south, but those levees were built in the 1890s by Chinese laborers who had come to build the railroad. And what they basically did was dredge the Sacramento and the San Joaquin Rivers and just pile dirt up so that they would have a place to grow their crops. Anyway, very, very interesting and worthwhile to educate yourself if anybody is interested in such a trip. Our Metropolitan Water District Board appointee, Peter Beard, is, arranges the trips, and he does approximately two a year. So it was extremely educational, I was able to connect the dots. Peter Gambino, who was on our planning commission, was there, as well as Linda Ackerman, who is our MODOC director. So, good group of people, very interesting. The West Nile virus has become an epidemic again in California, and we have exceeded the high point of last year, which was the worst that we'd ever had. There have been, to date, 28 deaths in California, three of those in Orange County, close to 60 infections of the very, very dangerous neurological kind. The one thing we've got going for us is weather like today. Once the weather shifts, the mosquito populations dive, and so, especially if you're a senior citizen, especially if you're diabetic, you are very susceptible to infection. So, be careful out there.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thanks so much. I wanted to just mention that not this Thursday, but a week from Thursday, is the 11th Annual Fullerton Women's Leadership Forum, and that's an event that is co-sponsored by Councilwoman Jan Florrie and myself and the Women's Club of Fullerton, where we honor five inspirational women throughout our community. And it's a free event at the Community Center. It starts at 5 o'clock, it's from 5:00 to 7:30, again, on Thursday, November 12th. And a new addition to the event this year is a charity fair for the first hour, where about 20 nonprofits from our city are going to be there, with information about how you can get involved. So I really encourage you, if you're not already involved in charity in Fullerton, that there is an outlet that will fit you. Just come and learn about how you can give back. I also wanted to, I really appreciate Mr. Package bringing up the beekeeping allowance that the city of LA just made. I read that article with interest as well, and I would love for this council to discuss changing our ordinance to allow for beekeeping here in Fullerton.
Thank you.
I also wanted to find out from staff what staff has been planning in anticipation of the landscape ordinance that has been ordered by the state relative to the drought. The Association of California Cities' Orange County chapter has drafted a model landscape ordinance that is less restrictive, gives more flexibility to local cities than the state ordinance. And it's my understanding that if a city doesn't have a model landscape ordinance in place by the beginning of December, then we automatically default to the state's ordinance. So I see Karen nodding her head. Maybe you could address that for me?
Sure. The planning commission at their last meeting recommended approval of an amendment to our zoning ordinance to adopt the state's model landscaping ordinance with some, just with some modifications for the city of Fullerton. That'll be coming before the council on November 17th.
Okay. I don't know if you've seen the model landscape ordinance that ACC has put forward, have you?
Yes.
Was that part of the discussion at Planning Commission?
Yes. Well, we pulled from a couple of model landscaping ordinances to put ours together. So there wasn't a discussion of any specific model landscape ordinance, but they did go over the one that we've proposed in detail.
Great. And then will we see that?
Yes.
We'll see that at our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. And then also, if, Mr. Schickling, I was hoping you would give us a drought update. I saw recently the horrible fines that a few cities throughout California received, and was glad to see we're not on the list because we're all, I know if you look at my lawn, it's gone, so I know a lot of other people are that way, too. So can you give us an update on how we're doing?
Yes, I can. For the, as you know, month of September, we reported in last time, we were 27- For the, as you know, month of September, we reported in last time, we were 27.1% savings when compared to the 2013 baseline. October was 20.18%. So down from the 27 and below our 28 target. That means we're running at about 24.4 overall. Yeah, four cities did get fined 122 days, $500 a day for each of them. They, those cities were at the 10 and 12% below their target mark. So we're running, you know, just a little, close to 4%. And that's, you know, we're hoping to obviously improve upon that with our campaigns that are coming out, some new median signs. We've been out to different organizations trying to get everything going. We're actually going to propose to you guys next meeting that we go to one day a week watering, a winter watering schedule. If we have rain, there shouldn't be any watering outdoors. So this would be something that a lot of cities around us are doing, but we'll bring it back to you on November 17.
Well, I know I for one would first like to see those of us in Fullerton who are still watering their lawns every day to please stop and follow the two-day-a-week schedule that we've provided. Will you remind everybody what that two-day-a-week schedule is for lawns?
Yes, it's Monday, or I'm sorry, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, no watering. No watering from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM every day. That's the standard. And then if you have an even-
I thought it was 9:00 AM.
No, it's 8:00 AM.
Is it 8?
8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then Tuesday and Saturday, if you have an even address, you're allowed to water. Thursday and Sunday, if you're an odd address. And we've given out over 800 warning citations. We haven't, no one has been fined yet. But, you know, it's something that the state is definitely looking, when they review how you're doing, to make sure that you are taking it very seriously and which we are, so.
That's great. I know, I personally appreciate all that you're doing. And look, none of us are happy with the restrictions that the governor's put on us or how he's dealt with this drought. But at this point, we all have to do our part. And so I would just ask everyone to continue to do your part to conserve water.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker.
Yes, I will echo one more time the Veterans Day observance here in Fullerton. Some other local cities have Veterans Day observances. But in my experience and having attended some of the others, Fullerton does a really great job of putting on the proper amount of respect and attention to Veterans Day. In the past few years, we've invited friends who are veterans from adjacent cities, from other parts of Orange County. And they all report leaving here very happy, very, feeling very good about what's going on regarding providing honors for our veterans. So if you know of someone else who hasn't been or hasn't attended, still got a little bit of lead time on that. This past Sunday, my wife and I attended the Dia de los Muertos celebration just next door in Placentia. But it was put on by the Muckenthaler Cultural Center. And it was an excellent program. This is the first annual. And the Muckenthaler is exporting some of their fine entertainment offerings to our neighboring city. They have acts like Ballet Folklorico, Monte Albano, Sean Olew, Trio Ais. It was a very nice event. The question that I had this evening regarding Laguna Lake is that, you know, we frequent the lake and I'm not really observing what we're hearing most of the time in council meetings is occurring or is supposed to occur. I know that the water usage or the water losses have been much less than what had been quoted earlier in the year. So I applaud that. But right now, the lake is probably at its lowest level ever. At least, most of the locals who live around the lake report they've never seen it so low. And there are also corresponding issues, including mature trees, which are, we're losing mature trees throughout the city at a very rapid rate. But I would like to find out where we're at with the plans to eliminate the leakage at Laguna Lake. I haven't heard anything recently. And what the actual water usage has been. And, you know, I think the council direction was to attempt to maintain the level of the lake. And I'm not sure under whose authority that has been changed. The other item that I want to bring up tonight, at least as an initiative for the council to consider, I'd like to see something agendized at the next meeting about this council forming an audit committee, an advisory audit committee, where we could have appointees with financial expertise serve as an advisory wing to this council. I believe that such a body would be very useful and helpful. As witnessed in the last couple of council meetings here, there have been some pretty pronounced disagreements on the way that financial information is being presented and whether it's accurate or appropriate. And rather than us trying to hash that out up here on the council, should we launch an advisory committee of this sort, I think it could be most helpful, beneficial at getting the council on the same page. And certainly could even be an asset for staff as well. So if someone would be so inclined as to back that request, I'd like to see a discussion initiated on that. The, I guess that'll be it for this evening, but I do look forward to hearing an update on Laguna Lake as well. Thanks.
Thank you. At this time, I don't know if, Dave, are you prepared to respond to the Laguna Lake question?
Yeah, we're currently at 70,000 gallons a day is going into Laguna Lake. It's, that's 50 gallons per minute. It did get low. We had some issues with the recirculation pumps. And it has, it is at a level that we've, that's its lowest, you know, that it's been in, say, I don't know, 10 years, just to quote a number. But it's, it got down well below what we were managing it at. We, the issue has been fixed. Everything's back on. We were off for about 10 days. And during that time, it hit 106 degrees, you know, Brea Fullerton area. So that was, that took a lot of water out. The days are now shorter, obviously. We have moisture in the air, but we're still putting, we're back to 70,000 gallons a day into that lake. So it will start to fill back up.
Well, I'm concerned about one other issue regarding that, which is when the lake level gets very low, it allows people to access some of the fixtures in the lake. And there's been vandalism of late, a number of the artificial stones that the water pumps through. They've been taken off and, you know, forming impromptu fountains there. And so it becomes an attractive nuisance of a sort as the water level recedes.
Okay. Duly noted. Thanks. Thank you. So there were-
You know what? I actually have an email from Don Hoppy about that, which, it's short, I can read it. Says the lake fill water was off for about two weeks, saving a half million gallons, but it dropped the lake level to a new low. Water was already flowing back into the lake on or around the same day as the last council meeting. We, to bring it up a little, to assure the recirculation pump intakes had enough cover to function properly. However, at the current flow of around 50,000 gallons per day, it is just holding its current reduced level. If I might add a bit of perspective, the lake level is down a little less than two feet, with the resulting maximum depth now around eight feet. Before the Water Quality Enhancement Project 10-plus years ago, the water level was usually around four to five feet down in the summer. It was green, foul smelling, and not very appealing, unlike the current condition. So that, I think, is a good review of what's happening there.
Thank you. All right, there were two requests for items to be agendized. Excuse me, beekeeping and audit commission or committee discussion. I'm fine with having both those agendized. Now, as mayor, I only have one more meeting after this in which we have some business to take care of. But I'm happy in agendizing those as soon as possible. I don't know, is there a preference by the council members that requested those for a specific time that they'd like to hear it? Mayor Brotem? No?
I think to provide the outlines of what we'd be looking for would be fairly simple.
Okay.
The formation of it and the employment of it might take a little bit longer.
Okay. So maybe we can see that on the 17th then? Does that sound appropriate?
That's the day that we're dealing with West Coyote Hills.
That's a very full agenda.
Yeah.
And it just got a little fuller. Okay.
May that be after the Coyote Hills matter?
Well, I think we have a, tentatively a consent calendar that is fairly compact. And I'm guessing this might be in that. If Councilmember Whitaker can take a look at it and talk to our city manager, see if there, if there's something that could be crafted and placed there. And if a council member has an issue with it, we can certainly pull it.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
I would pull it. As adding to our bureaucracy, we already have an outside auditor taking care of that.
It will appear on the agenda. Okay. We had a couple of open houses, not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before. Both the police department and both here in the mayor's office and city council offices. I hear the attendance over at the PD was down from previous years pretty substantially. I don't know how much of that's the weather and how much of that is just maybe people have visited, been there, done that, and maybe they've taken a break this year. The attendance here at the city hall was pretty steady. I wouldn't even take a wild guess as to how many people showed up, but say maybe 50-ish. It was, it was a good, good group, a lot of kids, a lot of scouts taking care of merit badges and that sort of thing. So it was, it was good. I think that is it. We had a request to pull item two. So as we move into the consent calendar, we have items one and three remaining. Is there a motion or does anybody want to pull those?
I'll move the consent calendar, the balance, number one and three.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. We'll now hear item number two, the first quarter fiscal year financial report and Brea Dam fund analysis. I believe a member of the public requested this be pulled. Is there a presentation that staff is prepared with or should we go ahead and go to public comments?
I would suggest go to public comments and we can respond to whatever level of questions are asked.
We'll open this up for public comments. Anybody wishing to speak on item number two, please come forward.
Does anyone need to recuse themselves before I get started? This is the Brea Dam matter. Okay. My name is David Curley, Fullerton resident.
Hang on, just a second.
Okay.
I back up to the Army Corps of Engineer property, but I don't have any financial interest in any of it, so.
What about the Fullerton Community Nursery School?
It's a nonprofit.
It's part of the Brea Dam.
It's a nonprofit.
Just asking. It's on the Brea Dam property, so.
It's a wonderful nonprofit. Anyone looking for the Orange County's oldest cooperative preschool, we've been there for five years and it's fabulous.
Well, I'm not here to criticize the preschool at all.
Great.
Yeah.
The YMCA and the tennis center is also on that.
And I'll talk about that shortly.
If we recused ourselves from anything that we're involved in in this city, we probably wouldn't be qualified to serve on city council.
Well, and I think more importantly, this report was a receive and file. So at this point, I don't think there's any decisions really being made.
I'm just looking out for you guys because you might not realize what's, what I'm about to say. This past summer, a few other Fullerton residents and myself, excuse me.
Would you identify yourself?
My name is David Curley.
All right, thank you.
Have spent, we spent about 200 to 300 hours reviewing all of the Brea Dam lease agreements, the financial records. And the results are frankly very bad. I would have to call it pretty widespread corruption, incompetence, maybe even fraud. I'd like to give you, as best I can summarize some of these problems. For starters, the city is out of compliance with the Army lease. So much so that we are right on the brink of the Army being able to revoke the lease and kick out all of the tenants, which means the YMCA could be kicked out, the nursery school could be kicked out, Child Guidance Center, everything, tennis center, golf course. The other problem is that the revenue generator on the Brea Dam property has to stay on the Brea Dam property. Mr. Fels and Ms. Loyah have said for years that that is the case. In reality, that's not what's happening. There are two cell sites on the Brea Dam land and there's revenue for only one being recognized in the accounting ledger. At the golf course, the city is taking sanitation revenue out of the water bill when all of the sanitation activities are already handled by the Army Corps of Engineers. That is not legitimate. The, at the golf course, the problems are really much worse. Let me get to that. The lease was renegotiated to a management contract in 2010. And since then, there's been, been very little oversight of their financial records. What we've got is basically no oversight into their expenses, which they don't submit all their documentation for. So there's nothing for their lease payments, their insurance, their benefit costs. Pretty much everything is not, not included. How much more of this would you like to hear? I can wrap it up?
If you could wrap it up, that would be appreciated.
There's a lot more to see. I would encourage everyone here to visit, I've created a website and there's about 2,000 pages of documents. It's breadam.org, B-R-E-A-D-A-M dot O-R-G. I would encourage everyone to go there and look at the documents for yourself, make your own conclusions. It's very bad. And it is so bad that I think we need to consider finding a new city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'd like to ask Mr. Curley a question. Have you put a report together at all regarding this with your major findings, like something in the, in the nature of the LA Times article today on the LA County Fairground?
Well, I've got the website. I mean, there's tons of information there.
Have you analyzed the information?
Oh, yeah. This summer, me, two attorneys, CPA, we spent 200 to 300 hours on it.
So I would think that out of that 200 to 300 hours, there would be a report or an analysis. For us to go to a website with 2,000 documents isn't going to be very helpful.
Well, no, it's not 2,000 documents, it's 2,000 pages. And it's the, the critical sections have already been removed. So it's, it's not going to take you long to go through everything. It would take 15 minutes, be very quick.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
You mentioned that the Army Corps of Engineers was close to revoking our lease with the city. Do you have any, did you have any communication with the Army Corps of Engineers? Or do you have such a letter from them?
I did briefly, but I didn't want to tell them it was about Fullerton. I didn't think that was good for the city to specifically tell them about our violations of the lease. So it was just in general terms. And their attitude was, and this is just one person, they felt that it's very possible, given what I told them, that yes, they could revoke the lease.
So there's no immediate threat of a lease revocation?
No, but I mean, the, once you see all of the, all the problems, I think you'll agree that it's, we're very close to that point. Very close.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Sean Payton, I just wanted to just outline, Mr. Curley did all the work here. I got a chance to look at this and he is correct. City is in violation. Councilman Florrie, as far as why the federal government hasn't done anything, who knows why the federal government does or doesn't do half the things they do? The, there is a certain amount of-
Mr. Curley actually said that the lease was close to being revoked.
Well, what he's saying is that we are, we are in violation. And I think that's correct. We are in violation. Now, we can rely on benign neglect and kind of roadrunner logic, where as long as we don't pay attention to the fact that we've gone off the road, we don't fall. But at some point, we are going to fall. And I think the right approach is to take a look at the documents, see- And I think the right approach is to take a look at the documents, see for yourself. And, you know, the, the whole problem about how this happens, a lot of these provisions, a lot of these changes occurred in 2010, before every single person here was on the council. That's why we're not attacking anyone on the council right now. But it's, it's symptomatic of the kind of problems that we've, we've been seeing over the last few years. The last meeting, we had a lease extension for 45 years. We didn't attach the lease. The same thing was done here.
We didn't approve that.
What?
We did not approve that last council meeting.
I know we didn't, but it was submitted to the council. And in 2010 was the same thing. A lease was submitted to the council, only this time it was approved. We've had accounts moving from fund to fund from year to year. And we're told, oh, well, that's because we thought this fund belonged here instead of belonged there. And it makes it very difficult to unwind these type of, of, of problems that have been uncovered here. So I would encourage people as well as the council and regular citizens to take a look at the website and get answers. I mean, you guys are, you guys are, at the end of the day, the buck stops with you. Nobody's blaming you for anything, nobody on the council anyway is, is being blamed. But I think you do have an obligation to take a look, see what happened and take appropriate action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Barry Levinson, this is important to me, not only because I'm a longtime resident, but I'm a commissioner in Park and Rec. I had an opportunity right before this meeting to quickly look, look at the website. And it seemed to me one of the problems was, and David Curley can correct me if I'm wrong, it seemed back, back in 2000, end of 2010, when, right before I got on the committee, they changed the way it was, the, the way the golf course was handled. It used to be responsible for all the expenses and we just got a, we just got percentages of their, of their golf revenues and restaurant revenues. At the time it was changed and we took over the expenses, somebody came up with a smart idea, when it was totally up to them, if we didn't change anything, to pay $1.7 million and putting in a whole new sprinkler system in the golf course, which we, the taxpayers, paid for. That's bad enough, but because we didn't have the 1.7, we, we took out a bond. And so on this website, I'm using their numbers, the estimate is it's going to cost us $5.1 million, when at the time, if we didn't change the agreement, the city, meaning the taxpayers, of course, wouldn't have been on, wouldn't have had to pay a red nickel. That is a real, real problem. And I concur that I'm not going to, I am going to make you somewhat responsible. How much detail you accept or lack of detail you accept, and I'm referring to everybody on, on the dais, is your responsibility. If you don't get your questions answered and you accept it, you are the last line of defense and then you are responsible. So it's up to all of you to not accept summarization and then vote on something when in fact, lots of times, that's, those summaries are misstatements, incorrect, and sometimes, whether they're intentional or not intentional, you're voting on bad information and you are ultimately responsible for that. So I hope in the future, starting today, starting the next meeting, that there will never be another situation where you accept from staff a document, support for, for what you're voting for, that does not answer all the major questions that you need to know before you can make an intelligent, wise, knowledgeable decision. And that will be on you and that's why I said that. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Mr. Levinson. You identified yourself as being a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee. It seems to me that this would properly come before Parks and Recreation. Have you asked your commission colleagues to address this and put it on their agenda and do an examination of it?
I certainly will. I just learned about it today, so I will certainly do that. Thank you.
Anything else?
I certainly will. It certainly belongs there, but it wasn't brought up and it needs to be brought up, among the other things like, like the Summit House and the Laguna Lake problems, et cetera, et cetera. So there's, there's going to be a very long, large, hopefully, agenda on the next, on our next committee meeting. All of it very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
That's a pretty serious set of allegations. Back in 1994, I don't know if you folks realize, I, I loved to fish and as a child, I would get up and go to the pier really early in the morning. And back in the early 90s, the city manager of Newport Beach cooked up a little scheme with the Irvine Company and some merchants. They wanted to develop the piers and found a way to, try to find a way to kick the fishermen off the piers so they could turn them into nice restaurants and, you know, through eminent domain, they were going to bulldoze some houses and put up some high rises. And with some wrangling with the Coastal Commission and the State Lands Commission and even some people that would, would least likely be involved in something like this, we basically let them sit back and make the noose. They passed the ordinance, which basically violated the city's tidling grant and subjected the city to potential revocation of that tidling grant in which the entire city of Newport Beach coastline, including the moorings and the waterfront revenue and the parking meter revenue, would all revert to the state of California. And it's funny because they went to the very last minute and, for lack of a better term, they're just so arrogant that they just figure they could do whatever the heck they want and thumb their noses until I had the letter written out to Dan Lundgren, who happened to be the attorney general at the time, to request a revocation of the city's tidling grant. And certainly, that was within the realm of possibilities. And low and behold, 1120-060 of the Newport Beach municipal code has never been implemented, although it's still on the books. And needless to say, the city manager about six months later was out of a job. I bring this up because the same thing happened at the Manhattan Beach Pier this summer where they tried to overstep their bounds. I remember sitting in the council chambers and a bunch of Century City attorneys were giving me the dirty looks, telling me they just got a petition to get rid of all these disgusting fishermen. And what they had concocted themselves was a nice petition to present to the city council. And I told them that, I'm sorry, but you happen to be in the wrong building, you need to go to the state legislature to deal with this issue. It's preempted with the Department of Fish and Game. What's going on here is kind of the same thing. It's a violation of the public trust. These lands were, are held in trust and your fiduciary responsibility is to the public to preserve and protect and implement the public trust. I don't know why my children have to pay to play in the snow. I don't know why the money's missing from the cell tower. That's a funny water bill, and by the way, that's a ton of water they're using. And I don't know why they have, they don't have to cut back. But the bottom line is, there are people in positions in government that are just as compartmentalized and myopic as some of you are, and they're ready to snap at, at the moment that something's handed to them. So I would strongly suggest that we get to the bottom of this quickly. It's a nice piece of property and I'm sure the Army Corps of Engineers could find a way to sublease it to Brea or grant it or deed it to somebody else in trust. It would probably make better use of it if we can't even manage to keep our books straight and be honest with everyone. So there's some big problems in this town, folks, and, and they don't seem to be going away. Maybe we need to get rid of some of you up here to make it happen. And I plan on doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay, not seeing anybody else come forward, we'll close public comments and bring it back to council.
I move that we receive and file the report.
Second.
There is a motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, thank you. We'll now move on to item number four.
Thank you, Mayor. We put this on regular business. We give you a, the city clerk typically gives you a district elections update. Things are active. Mr. Ely is meeting with individuals and wanted to put up on the television screen the upcoming dates for the community meetings. These were, these are designed for groups to come together and get involved in the mapping process, so we just wanted to present these dates and times. You'll see there at four different locations throughout the city, different times, evenings, weekends. So that was the purpose of putting this on the regular item and this is posted on our website as well, right on the front page. I believe there's a, does it say district elections? An icon on there. So that was the purpose of this. Be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions from council? All right. It is scheduled as a regular item. We'll open up to public comments. Anybody wishing to speak on item four, please come forward. Seeing nobody come forward, we'll close public comments, bring it back to council.
Receive and file the item.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, thank you. We'll now move on to item number five. I believe Gretchen Beatty, you have a presentation?
Yes, Mayor, I do. Mayor and council, I'm Gretchen Beatty, Director of Human Resources. This item is the final review of a proposed tentative agreement that the city reached with the Fullerton Municipal Employees Federation. That is the group of bargain, bargaining unit representing about 300 employees or 300 positions throughout the city in non-sworn, non-management positions. We reviewed the details of the tentative agreement in our last meeting two weeks ago. The redline agreement with showing all changes to the expired agreement was included with the agenda material. At that time, it's, it's also included with the agreement or the, the agenda item for I will just very briefly touch on the main changes in the agreement. That is a four-year term running through June 2019. As we discussed two weeks ago, there are across-the-board increase proposed for this unit in the first year, 4%, followed by 1.5%, 1.5% and 3% in the final year. We also negotiated medical insurance benefit reductions with this group for the most popular HMO plan and for the PPO plan, which helps to reduce premiums for the 2016 calendar year. And finally, we have a re-opener following a study by a consultant about options we have for medical, both providers and contribution strategies for the future 2017 and beyond. We looked at this slide last week, just for, as a quick touch on it. It shows the picture of where we've come from and where this agreement will bring us back to in 2008, 2009. For a period of a couple of years, these employees had no cost of living increase. As Councilmember Whitaker did point out, there was a, a period in there where there was a 5% gross payback deduction, as we called it, that was offset by some additional time off. That's not reflected in this slide as, as that program was replaced in the 1112 year with a 7% cost sharing. That is, employees in this unit were paying 0% to their CalPERS prior to 2011-12. And beginning in the 1112 year, they began paying 7%. And when this program was implemented, the offsetting time off disappeared. So it was an impact to the employees, though their salaries stayed the same, their take-home pay was reduced by 7%. In the 1314 and 1415 year, again, there was no cost of living increase. There were limited rebates issued during that year that had no ongoing benefit, but at a cost of about $500,000 for the period. And then at the bottom of the slide, you see the impact of the proposed agreement for each of the years, ranging in the first year from 822,294 to 1819, where the impact is
Gretchen, that, those numbers, that 2,152,000, 2,152,000, that is the cumulative total over the four years, is it not? Or is it for just that one year?
It's the cumulative impact. So it is the cost in that year of the agreement, the total impact in that year.
So if you wanted to know what the total cost of the four-year calendar, four-year contract is, you would add each one of those years?
That's correct.
The last column.
That, that would be the total impact to the budgeted agreement or to the tentative agreement.
Okay, thank you.
This slide addresses another discussion that we had last time about what is the correct way to reflect the cost of the agreement. Again, Councilmember Whitaker brought up that there are costs besides those that we were reflecting. And we chose to reflect the, the cost as we did in keeping with the new ordinance 3213, which requires that we provide the council and publish a fiscal analysis that shows the impact of the changes related to the tentative agreement. So the cost that we, we published and those that we just looked at on the previous slide, ranging from the 822,000 to the 2.152 million, were those changes that were related specifically are the impact of the changes in the tentative agreement. On this slide, we've also added, in the light blue, you can see the portion of those changes that are, will impact the general fund. Because the employees are spread out throughout the city, serving in a number of, a number of different capacities, part of the cost of the, the impact will be borne by other funds, other than the general funds, like the sanitation fund, the sewer fund, the streets fund. In the final column, we have begun to show, and we did in this agenda letter and we're showing in this slide, what those costs related to CalPERS increases that we have already either know or are anticipating in the years that are not reflected as the impact of the changes. So in addition to the cost increases related to the proposal in this column, we have those that we are projecting related to the CalPERS increases that are related to, that are arising from the CalPERS strategy to begin funding the infant liability. This slide shows an example of our fiscal analysis. In fact, the fiscal analysis that went with this particular proposal when it was made to the bargaining unit. In the columns that I've highlighted here in yellow, these are the costs that we've talked about. These are the impact of the changes. Same numbers while we've been looking several places along the way. In the row that I've highlighted here are the retirement cost projected for the current year based on the current salary cost. So as you can see, we are reflecting each of the successive years, the increased, the increased cost of CalPERS, which carries through, throughout this fiscal analysis. With that, I will make the recommendation that council adopt the resolution in next in order and authorize the necessary appropriations and adjustments for fiscal year 2015-16 and 2016-17.
All right. Any questions at council before we open to public comments?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't want to retread everything from last time, Gretchen, but I do have concerns that the total impacts aren't really being presented as cumulative numbers more clearly from something to something. And I'm troubled by the efforts to make certain costs, very directly related costs, such as pension increases, to handle them as though they're off-budget or somehow not related to what we're looking at, where, where indeed, any increases in pay levels has an immediate and direct effect on pension costs. Staff, in my opinion, should be providing full disclosure and transparency, particularly when they themselves are materially affected by these council decisions. So rather than have a battle with staff over all these fine points and the way that information is being presented, which I believe still leans in a direction of making the impacts appear less, that's why the need for this audit committee and inability for the council to have some assistance in ferreting this out. I, I heard Councilmember Chafee earlier saying that that wasn't necessary, but I see some real problems here with understanding government fund accounting and whether we have modified accruals and how we reflect expenses and how we catch up in areas where we've been understating expenses. And I see a very real need for more light to be shed on this process, not less. And what I keep seeing is a minimalist presentation that has a very pronounced lean in the direction of making this appear to be a softer hit than, than in my opinion it is. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions at council? All right, at this time, we'll open up for public comments. Anybody wishing to speak on item number five, please come forward. First speaker, please.
Barry Levinson. Last time and this time as well, there've been some comments by Councilmember Chafee in including those pension, catch-up pension costs, saying that that shouldn't be included. And I find that, not to be disrespectful, but to be almost a comical statement, because what he is saying, ladies and gentlemen, is that because the city has not kept up with the proper payments into our pension system for years and years and years, which will require for this one bargaining unit, an additional require for this one bargaining unit, an additional 1 point, I added up the numbers, 1.6 million dollars of catch-up, that we should not include it in there. That's the reason why it has to be included, to show how poorly this city has managed our money. And the fact that Doug Chafee doesn't seem to get that is scary. It's very scary. And the fact that you, ma'am, Ms. Florrie, you said that it was, that 800 or 900,000 dollars was a philosophical difference. It will be paid by the taxpayers. It's 1.6 billion, actually, not just the eight, that was just one year and the out-years. The whole thing is 1.6 million. If you think that's a philosophical difference, I would, in all due respect, ask you to take out your personal check and write it, write out a 1.6 million dollar check to the City of Fullerton if you think that that's not important, because I do. And it's really hard for me, as somebody with an accounting, with an MBA and being an accountant and auditor my entire life, to hear the nonchalance, the absolutely, the naivete, if not downright misinformation, that is spewing from some of you that are supposed to be in a fiduciary responsibility. That's what you're here for, not to accept what the staff says as gold, as 100% right. I'm not accusing the staff of anything, but when they don't give you the details, it's your job, like I just said before, to get them. And if you don't get them, it's not their fault who presented them, it's your fault. And like everything else in government, there should be some accountability. And this 1.6 million dollars, which you want to not include in this bargaining unit cost, is because you didn't include in the last bargaining cost, or the one before that, or the one before that. And this is the makeup, which is going higher and higher every year, 275,000, then 526, then 800,000. So I guess if you kept on going, it would be 1.1, 1.4, 1.7. Before you know it, the whole budget will be, we don't have enough money in our general fund to pay for this catch-up, which Ms. Florrie calls a philosophical difference. And Mr. Chafee was, thought it was laughable. Well, the joke is on the Fullerton taxpayers, and I'm sorry that some of you don't get that, but I'm here to explain it to those people, to make sure that hopefully you do get it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Like I said before, the jig seems to be keeping that trough full for everybody involved, the overpaid, redundantly ridiculous positions that we could do without. And I'm not knocking public employees, I'm knocking just good business sense. Most of the stuff that goes on in this city does not make business sense to me, and I've been in the private sector my entire life. What we're witnessing is authoritative arrogance. And you're all, you're all well insulated, you're all well-connected, you have your cocktail parties, and you got your connections, and you pat each other on the back, and you make sure that, you know, you got all your connections, but they're dirty. And the sad thing is, is that everybody's going along with it. I mean, at what point do we realize that there is no money and that the roads are a joke? They're a total joke. Okay, I'll repeat that 100 times. I am sick and tired of the suspension on my cars. These roads are awful. Someone's going to get killed by hitting a pothole in the rain, or veering into a sidewalk full of pedestrians, because there's potholes everywhere. I mean, you can tell how corrupt a city government is by the condition of its infrastructure. And you can throw up a $200 million community center and compete with private enterprise and the private citizens out there and lease it out at its sub-market rates, and you can call that, you can call that a success. I don't call that a success. I call that a joke. I mean, the trees are dying, we're killing all these trees. I think we ought to just pay the water fine and have everybody have their grass back. I mean, you're wasting the millions of dollars on all kinds of other stuff, and nobody seems to care. And, okay, we'll just rob Peter to pay Paul, no one's looking, and, you know, let's just throw Barry in jail if we don't like what he says, and, you know, let's get Embriano reeled into this so we can paint him out to be as whatever we want, because we don't like people, we don't like people sniffing around our little room here. We don't like people looking around at our dealings. But folks, there's laws in place, the Freedom of Information Act, Public Record Ask/Request, everything's transparent, at least it's supposed to be. Problem is, everybody's asleep, because everybody's on the take. Everybody's making their little money, they're going home, they're happy, nobody cares about anybody else, because I'm gonna, I don't have to save for retirement, because the taxpayers are going to pay 100% of my retirement. I can go blow it all on a ski boat and get myself a big barbecue island. Look, ladies and gentlemen, everybody out there that you represent, most of them are working two jobs, they need a new roof on their house, their kids can't afford college, they're driving older cars, and we're sitting in here talking about a million dollars like it's a philosophical difference. That's an insult. And I'm sorry, but, you know, the bottom line is, I think most of you folks in here have lost touch with your humanity. Now, you think that everybody's entitled to more pay raises every year, when the economy's contracting, the only thing happening is there is an expansion of wealth as a result of inflation. That's what's happening. I mean, people are, the standard of living is dropping, and you're giving away the farm. It needs to stop. The money's not there, and we don't need to move this forward. I think we need to freeze all the pay until we fix all our problems.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Not seeing anyone else come forward, we'll close the public comments, bring it back to council for consideration.
To get the discussion moving, I would move to adopt the resolution approving the agreement with the Fullerton Municipal Employees Federation dated October 20, 2015, and authorize necessary appropriations and adjustments for the 2015-16 and 16-17 budgets.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Councilmember Chafee?
Yes, I think what I said before was not well-understood. I do consider the past unfunded liability very serious, but what I was saying, the past has nothing to do at all with the new contract. We have that broken out. And whether we have the new contract or not, we'd still be obligated to pay those other charges in that last column. That's all I was saying, indeed. It is because the past was not sufficiently funded, not entirely this city's fault. There've been a lot of different things going on with the public employees' retirement system, such as poor management and losing money, and they're trying to recover that and come back to a fiscal line. So I do consider that amount serious, but it's not really connected to the 3% increase we're giving these employees over 11 years. And that's the only point I was making, that to say that the charges we're going to pay anyway have something to do with this contract, a modest increase, is not accurate accounting. It is a liability long ago accrued. We have to pay it, we need to pay it, I agree with that, but it's not to be connected with the new contract, because it isn't. It's there and needs to be paid, whether this new contract comes through or not. That's the only point I was making. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Yes, Councilmember Whitaker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've, for many years, been involved in analyzing budgetary changes and the effects of collective bargaining as well, both at the county and at the state level, as well as the city. And I've, yeah, this is the first time that I've encountered representations which talk only about take-home pay for employees and try to isolate that as the important factor. I believe that that's inappropriate for numerous reasons, and I think a number of other of the mechanics that have been involved, and this is the first set of contracts that we're approving, the others that will be following will be similarly affected by these methods. I believe what we're doing right now, considering the state of infrastructure in the city, is unwise, it's out of proportion, and it's unsustainable. So I understand that I'll be on the short end of this vote, but I do want to register those concerns and the fact that this council does need to wise up in terms of the cumulative impact of what you're about to approve. Thank you.
Mayor, pretend.
Since 2007, our FEMF employees have been in concessions contracts, which means that they have entered into contracts in which they've given up pay and benefits in order so that everyone would keep their jobs during the economic recession. And I wanted to say thank you to all the employees who have worked hard through the recession and stuck with Fullerton. We really appreciate your commitment. We all knew, all of us on this council going into these agreements, that we would be looking at modest increases in salaries. And I will say, with agreements like this, you never get everything you want. But what I like about this agreement is, I do think that it's fair. What priority for me was to get healthcare funding reform on the table, and that's a part of this. And I also wanted to get long-term contracts that would increase stability for our city. And this accomplishes that as well. So I'll be pleased to vote for this tonight.
Councilmember Florrie, do you have anything to add?
I do. I also support the comments made by Councilmember Chafee and Councilmember Fitzgerald. We have a great staff of employees. In 2008, our staff was reduced, our employees took a cut in pay, they have not had any increase in pay since 2007. They, I think there is a legitimate reason for talking about the net pay that our employees take home, because they had to pay a bigger share of their healthcare insurance and a bigger share of their CalPERS payments. That did reduce their net. I look at my own income. I'm transitioning or trying to transition into retirement, but my income continues to grow every year, and I would have to seriously question if I wanted to stay with an employer who wouldn't value my service enough to give me a modest increase in pay. This council, the majority of the council, has agreed that 4% pay in the first year, followed by two increases of 1.5%, and in the fourth year, a 3% bump in raise for a total of, what, over the four years? Four, three, nine percent. Extremely modest, given the length of time that our employees have worked. I'm going to direct you to read a really good article that Rusty Kennedy wrote in the Current Fullerton Observer. And he starts out by saying, "The word 'government' is being used to dehumanize the people who work for our common good. Government employees who actually do good things, like building flood control channels, protecting the public from contagious diseases, incarcerating criminals, dispensing justice by the rules and laws we create, caring for our sick and elderly, overseeing planning and development to protect the community from unforeseen consequences of unchecked construction." Honestly, sometimes I think if I were to just sit here and listen to the babbling of many of the members of the public, who I never see constructively, positively supporting fundraising events, working at the food kitchens, being out there on Love Fullerton days, these are the ones that are the most critical. And honestly, I would just give up my job if I thought that the majority of our citizens thought like the naysayers who come up here, week in and week out, and bang on us from their bully pulpit. And it actually is a bully pulpit. And the reason is, is that when the, when the public comes at us, they know that we can't respond in the same fashion that we would if we were face-to-face with that individual. And I consider it bullying. Every single person that sits up here is also a taxpayer. We spend many, many hours reviewing documents and, and sitting in closed session and reading agendas and serving on other committees, and yet, there is precious little credit that is given for that. Oh, and I need to tell you that we make the princely sum of $650 per month for doing that. Councilmember Fitzgerald doesn't even take any salary at all for it. She probably spends three times that on babysitters so that she can do this job. In any event, our city staff is wonderful, I thank them for their service, I thank them for hanging in there with us, and I wholeheartedly support this.
And, Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me, I'll say one more thing.
Okay.
It is false to say that we are choosing salaries over roads. If you look around this city, there is road construction going on all over this city. This current budget more than doubles our funding for road repair. And while prior councils may not have been paying as much attention to it as they should have, we are. It is our priority to fix the roads in this town, and we are doing that.
I will reiterate three major concerns that I had with this proposal, and really, this is for item five and item six, I mean, just to summarize. The length of the contracts, I was looking for a longer-term contract, which some people, I guess, are fearful of a longer-term contract. For me, it meant more stability, I felt. I also had issues with the sources of revenue that were shown. Some of the sources were very speculative. That was a decision made by our city manager to include those, and they were, they were in there. And then the, what I would characterize as fuzzy math, and things that were in there that weren't in there, that should maybe be accounted for that weren't accounted for. I have a problem with that. I like all the information out there, and when other councilmembers are pointing out that, hey, what about this cost, what about that cost? I don't see it in here, I see it in this table, but it's not in this one and that sort of thing. I get concerned. So those were my reasons for not supporting this at our last meeting. I'm going to continue that forward with this item. And with that, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? And abstained? Thank you. We'll now hear item six.
Mayor and Council, this item is the first reading of tentative agreements reached with the Fullerton Police Officers Association. This association actually represents two different units at the city. One, the dispatcher unit, that represents employees serving in 15 different budgeted positions of lead dispatcher and dispatcher. And then the safety unit, that represents employees serving in the 136 budgeted positions of police officer trainee, police officer, police corporal, and police sergeant. This, like the Federation tentative agreement, was reached through a process that fell under the ordinance 3213. We had, serving as our lead negotiator for the city negotiating team, Steve Berliner, and I believe Steve is here in the audience this evening to answer any questions that you may have of him. As I did with the Federation agreement, I will walk through the terms of the agreements reached with the two units of the Fullerton Police Officers Association. As with the Federation, we began negotiations with this group in June of this year and worked through October, exchanging various proposals between the city and the FPOA. Per the terms of our ordinance, we did post the rejected proposals on the website. Last week, we had a discussion about how to get there, and maybe we should make that a little bit easier. We have answered that concern. I have a screenshot here of the face page or the homepage of our website, and right at this point here, there is now a link that will take you directly to the labor negotiations page, where you can click on the various bargaining units and find where we are in negotiations with our various bargaining units. The tentative agreement with this group was reached on October the 15th and posted online on October the 27th, seven days ago, per the provisions of the ordinance. It is scheduled for first review tonight by city council with no action to be taken, and under the requirements of the ordinance, will be brought back on November 17th for final consideration. Don't know what happened just then. There we go. This slide looks much like the slide that we looked at for the Federation. The dispatcher unit, again, this is the smaller of the two units. Miscellaneous employees, like the members of the Federation, they have been without a cross-the-board or salary increase since 2008, 2009. They also agreed to the 7% cost sharing that was implemented in 2011-12. They They also received the limited rebates in the 13, 14, 14, 15 years. The terms of the tentative agreement for this group, again, is a four-year agreement, as exemplified here at the bottom of this slide. In 1516, there is a provision to provide a 6% across-the-board increase. The following year, 3%. The third year, 2%. And the fourth year, 2.5%. On the last column here, you'll see the impact of these across-the-board increases, ranging in the first year from the $52,556. The second year, the total amount of the increase related to the proposal is $72,622. The third year, $87,842. And the last year, $108,430. For the safety unit, this is the unit that represents the sworn positions, about 136 at the city. This group has been without an across-the-board increase since the 2009, 2010 fiscal year. In 1112, their cost sharing, which they had been paying 2.52% beginning in the early 2000s, increased by 7% as we implemented with the miscellaneous groups. So they went from 2.252% to 9.252%. In 1314, they also experienced a limited rebates, reached agreement with the city on that, equal to a one-time cost for the two-year period of approximately $420,000. In the four-year term, as proposed in the tentative agreement, there are across-the-board increases proposed in the amount of 6% in the first year, 3% the second, 2% the third, and 2.5% the fourth. The cost of these changes is reflected, again, in this last column. Beginning in the first year, the impact of the changes is $1,304,619. The second year, $2,44,660. The third, $2,574,055. And finally, $3,258,120. In this example, we're showing, as we began doing with the Federation in the last presentation, we have those numbers that I just reviewed for the two units, showing the impact of changes as reviewed by the auditor. And in this second column, these are the projected CalPERS increases for the, as there's nothing new for the 1516 year. The 1617 year, the number reflected here is already included in the proposed budget for that year, as we have a two-year budget. And then the two successive years would be included in the budget for those years. Diving now into the specific terms of the tentative agreement, like with the Federation in your agenda package, you have the redline copy of the agreement showing all the changes from the expired agreement to the proposed tentative agreement. It is a four-year term from 2015 to 2019, and I would say it is for both units. There are across-the-board increases, as we just discussed, 6%, 3%, 2%, and 2.5%. For the dispatchers, we have one employee in that group that was, in 2012, was laid off following the demise of the Redevelopment Agency and the funding that was lost in the Community Development Department. As she had previously served as a dispatcher, she was laid off and bumped back into that dispatcher role. She had been, she has been Y-rated in that position, meaning her salary, she didn't suffer a loss from it, but she's been held at that level for, since that time. She will not receive an increase in the first year of the agreement as the rest of the employees in the group catch up with her. The second year, there's a few cents difference in her Y-rated salary and the second-year proposed salary. So at that point, she'll move on to the regular salary schedule for the dispatchers. In the safety agreement, you would have seen that there are some changes under the increment pays for canine officers and motor officers. They are to comply with the FLSA, the Fair Labor Standards Act, and update language as appropriate. Both agreements, like with the Federation agreement, you'll see under the CalPERS heading that there are a number of changes there. Those are not changes that are new, but rather changes that reflect the impact of the Public Employees Pension Reform Act of 2013, or PAPRA, as well as the cost sharing that we entered into in 2012. Under the heading of medical insurance, we negotiated the same benefit level reductions for both groups as we did with the Federation. So we have reduced plan benefits on the most populated California Care HMO plan, as well as the PPO plan. We also have the re opener for 2017 or later, after the consultant completes a study. And then we have discretion to reopen should we need to comply with the Affordable Care Act. Specific to the safety group, we have a provision that changes the corporal promotion selection process. Rather than automatic promotion, when an employee reaches the top of the list, we have something now that we've negotiated that the process will be identical to that, that choose for sergeant, and that the chief of police has the discretion to hire from the top three employees on the list. Under the heading of tobacco use, we deleted some unenforceable provisions regarding off-duty use of tobacco. And under discipline and grievances, we have standardized all of the time periods to respond or file grievances, discipline, et cetera, to 14 calendar days. And that addresses the changes other than those that are cleanup or deletion of outdated language, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions. Could you go back to Slide number four? So, correct me if I'm incorrect here, but I believe if we add up the cost increases related to proposal column, if you add up each one of those dollar amounts, that's the cumulative total for those increases. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then if you add to it the projected CalPERS increases to it, that would be the total effect on the budget from this series of negotiations.
That is correct. Part related to negotiations, part related to the CalPERS increases.
Okay, so I'm adding up just off the cuff somewhere in the neighborhood of $14 million on this one slide. That's a big chunk of change. I also wanted to ask a question about the tobacco issue on, I think that was Slide six.
Mm-hmm.
So, do we have a wellness program?
We have wellness programs that are available through our health plans. We don't have a city-administered wellness program.
If an employee is involved in the health wellness program, do they get a reduction on their health insurance?
We have not negotiated that, no.
Okay, so one thing I've noticed, a trend in the private sector, and granted, the public sector seems to be a few years behind on some of these things. This might be one of them, that if you are, you know, in this case, using tobacco, and it's something that we can't necessarily dictate what you do and how you do it off on your own time, the wellness program will kind of cover that, and it'll raise their premiums in accordance with their lifestyle, and it'll help keep those that lead a healthier lifestyle, keep their premiums low. So that may be something that we want to look at as a long-term strategy. I know we mentioned this during the negotiation process as a discussion, and I believe the consensus was, we didn't want to make any significant medical insurance changes at this point because there's some medical reopeners that may be coming up. And that's one of the things that I would say we definitely want to look at. So any of those effects on premiums, we want to be able to put the burden of that increase where the burden is created. So if it's a lifestyle issue, then that needs to be addressed through something like a wellness program. Any other questions or comments from council before we open up for public comments?
Just one.
Yes?
Yes, Gretchen. If we look across the page here and we look at the annual increases, 6% in the first year, 3, 2, and 2.5, the simple analysis would be 13.5% over time. But if we go to the total employee costs and we look at this, it's nearly a 20% increase over that span. That would include the pension impacts and also the compounding of these increases. So the effect here over this plan is almost a 20% increase in employee-related costs. And in fact, the cost is even higher than that because we've projected, at least for this analysis, no change in health benefits costs, and that would be a very tall order, I think. So in reality, I believe that a few other areas here that will probably experience growth, we don't have a crystal ball, but it's probably a good bet that this will exceed 20% in terms of its impact to the city. My concern, again, exists with where do we find the revenue over time to keep up with these steadily increasing costs? And will we have to embrace revenue-enhancing policies as a city that starts putting that ahead of everything else, making policy decisions based on their revenue potential? And those are my concerns, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Councilmember Florrie.
Ms. Beatty, I have a question. The council has made a policy that we want to start biting into our unfunded liability. And if you can believe a recent article in The Register, the city of Fullerton is doing a very good job of that compared to other cities in Orange County. Does this reflect that policy decision?
The reflection in this agreement, there's two parts where it touches on it. One would be the increased cost to CalPERS. This was CalPERS' effort to accelerate the rate of correcting the unfunded liability. The other place where we're touching on it is on the re opener for the medical plans. As we've discussed, council has some objectives that they wish us to address during the analysis and then the subsequent negotiations on that. And part of that is to address our OPEB liability, do what we can do to reduce it or at least stop the growth of it. So it is in there, though there's nothing directly in the terms of this agreement, proposed agreement.
In one of our closed sessions, I had asked the chief to come forward and explain what his recruiting problems were in the current environment. And I'd like the chief to come forward, if he could, and give a brief summary of the city of Fullerton's last recruitment process and what that yielded, and why it is that we are looking at this kind of scenario in our negotiation.
Thank you. I shouldn't have snuck in the back door. Well, we had two different recruiting processes. One that you're referring to, where we had over 140 applicants and only 18 passed the recruiting process, and then...
How many positions were you recruiting for?
We were recruiting for eight of them. Then recently, we had about 120 applicants, and out of that, we are at 22 right now before we begin the background aspect. We normally lose about half in the background, if not more than that. So part of the issue has been changing, really, the process in which we do recruiting. And so the idea has been, because we're kind of shying away from lateral officers, we still will accept them, but we find that bringing them in early in our cadet program and working with them for the first three, maybe four years, and really getting them the understanding of what we're trying to accomplish in the culture of the organization, what we're trying to serve our community as hiring from that pool. The problem is, obviously, it's going to take us about three to four years to get them to that level, to where they're going to be of the age to be able to go through the police academy. And so that's the process where we're at right now.
Okay, so go back to the recruitment that occurred prior to the last one. You had 111 people responded to that, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you hire anyone out of that pool?
No, we have not.
So not one person was qualified out of the 111?
They either did not pass the written portion, or they failed the background portion or the medical portion of the testing process. So we had another testing process where we expanded the entry-level officers. Again, this is something where we're looking to actually send a, someone without any prior training or experience in law enforcement to a police academy, pay them to go through the academy, and ultimately go into a field training officer program that will be, approximately that process is about one year, sometimes a little bit more than that, but...
Of the 111 applicants, was an offer extended to any of those applicants?
Not at this point. We are still in the process. We believe we have eight that we still need to look at to see if, or actually down to 11 to see if we can accomplish that. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll open up Item Number 6 to public comments. First speaker.
Thank you. Sean Payton, Fullerton resident. You know, it seems like every time one of these employment agreements comes up, the first thing we hear is so-and-so union hasn't had a pay raise since 2007, 2008, 2009, whatever long it's been. Let's remember, let's not go back to 2007, 2008 now, let's go back to 2001. 2001 was when we had the retroactive pension spike for all city employees in Fullerton. As of today, as of 2014, we have 82 city employees with a pension of $100,000 a year or more. That's 82 employees. We are in a car that is driving towards a cliff at 80 miles an hour, and unfortunately, the majority of this council wants to pat themselves on the back for slowing the car down to 65. And of course, now, we're going to go back up to 75 because times are great. That is not what we need. What we need to do is we need to stop the car and we need to turn it around, and we're not doing that. We've got, oh, an interesting provision of the agreement that wasn't mentioned is there is a half-hour overtime compensation for officers that are managing the canines. So they're getting paid to manage the family dog. It wasn't mentioned there, but it is in paragraph M of the agreement. Little food for thought. And we have a minute and a half, but Councilmember Florrie, I can't believe your comments. That was unbelievably arrogant of you to attack people in the public who come here and take time out of their schedule to say what their concerns are. And I volunteer. I volunteer with mitzvah meals coast-to-coast, so I do that. I'm a concerned citizen. I'm concerned about my schools, my daughter's schools, the roads, the infrastructure, the parks, everything that makes this city what it is. And I want it to continue, and it's not going to if we're not tackling this pension problem by the horn. Every single person here in the council said pensions are a problem and they need to be reformed. This is not reform. So we need to fix the pension problem. We need to go back to the drawing board and not approve this plan. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
You know, it's amazing how we just think the money's just going to keep coming. I don't know if you remember after World War II, we entered into the Bretton Woods Agreement and kind of got the US dollar pegged to the oil trades. And that's the reason why for five bucks, you can get a sack of rice. But if you go to another country where they don't have their currency pegged to the oil trade, five bucks of their money won't get you a sack of rice. You've got to have a sack of beans to get a sack of rice. Ladies and gentlemen, that's going to happen in the United States eventually as we move away from the US dollar being the world reserve currency. That's an inevitability. And all of the plans that you're making are linear, and you're looking over a horizon that quite frankly is not a horizon. It's a cliff, like Sean said. I wanted to comment on Rusty's article because this is just government. You know, I'm not here to bully anyone. I'm here to tell the other side of the story. I'm petitioning my government for a redress of grievances. It's my constitutional right. And I think if this room was full of more people, we wouldn't be already down this road as far as we are. But, you know, building flood channels to protect us from El Nino, how about the government employees that are running the geoengineering operations that are wreaking havoc with our weather? How about the protecting public from contagious diseases through immunization? How about the people that are forcibly vaccinating children and giving them autism and putting sterilants into the vaccines and the cancer viruses that are making our children the sickest in the world? Incarcerating criminals that break laws while protecting their constitutional rights? How about trying to frame people and murder innocent people and stretching the law to protect all your crony pals? Dispensing justice by the rules and laws we create? How about making criminals out of everybody in the United States with the legislation that we pass behind closed doors? Exterminating bugs and berman that just spread diseases when they bite? How about the forcible spraying of things like malathion and all these chemicals that the vector control took it upon themselves to sneak and try to spray us with recently? How about caring for our sick and elderly when they have no family members? How about the eugenics programs? How about the euthan- How about the euthanasia that's going on in our hospitals, in our nursing homes? Providing basic necessities for low-income moms and their young children? How about the welfare laws that create situations where people don't get married and kids grow up without a dad and end up in prison? And they end up in poverty, and it's a generational thing. Overseeing planning and development, this one's hilarious. I mean, you were trying to sneak the downtown core corridor thing go through? I mean, this is, I live in another world, and I think a lot of other people do too. I think some of you live in La La Land, to be honest with you, and looking out for the mentally ill with proper care that can live normal lives. When you look at all the pharmaceuticals that are being forced on everybody, you can't even watch the idiot box without being drugged almost by the commercials. Everything's pills, and that's the solution to everything. Helping people who have committed crimes, repair the harm they've done and restore their lives. Have you been to a prison? Do you know how they're treated in there? Do you know what kind of sadistic freaks are running in our prison systems? I mean, providing shelters as a last resort for the homeless? Look at these churches, $50 million churches, and they're shut down six days a week. I could go on. Ladies and gentlemen, this whole thing's a fraud. We've got to stop this car from going over the cliff and running everybody over. There is no money. We need to fix stuff, and we need to take care of the people in this community, not the employees.
Next speaker, please.
First, I have to set the record straight with Ms. Florrie. You make comments like you think you know me, Ms. Florrie, about volunteering. My wife and I volunteer every year at our son's Laguna Road School, helping out the teacher. My wife has been a member of the PTA for about four years. My wife and I, especially my wife, we are regular helpers at the food bank at our local church at St. Andrews. Just last Friday, it was myself, my wife, and my 10-year-old son helping people. So, I think you owe me an apology because you didn't know what you were talking about. I do care about people, and that's why I'm up here. Well, the $1.6 million that we talked about, that was the catch-up for the general employees, is now 3.4 for the safety employees. So, now, we're talking about only two of the union groups, and we're up to $5 million just in catch-up that we're not supposed to consider because it really, according, and you keep on saying that, Ms. Florrie, and you keep on saying, Mr. Chafee, hey, that's not part of this. Yes, it is. Because they got that benefit, because we owe them that money, the taxpayers. And I don't, I have no problem with city employees getting a raise. I haven't talked about the nuts and bolts. I've only talked about the process. And I've heard from Ms. Florrie, and only from Mr. Whitaker have I heard anything concerned about the people you represent, which is not the public employees. Surprise, surprise. I know you get a lot of campaign contributions from them, and it certainly helps you. But you're actually supposed to represent us, the people that you seem to despise. Because what about us? It costs us the money. This $5 million payback is because you guys didn't do the right job before. So, now, we have to make it up. But let's not count it. If you ran your business, either one of you, you're both lawyers that way, you'd both be bankrupt because that's not the way of business. You have to make, you have to make your money count. It's just unbelievable. Ms. Beatty, I have to correct you. I'm starting to wonder whether or not your mistakes are just a misstatement or done intentionally. Because you mentioned about the cost share. Wasn't it also at that time, didn't the safety workers get a one-time payment to make up for the cost share? Wasn't that correct? Never. They didn't get money back to help pay for their cost share in the last contract or any time in the past. Never.
Sir, please address the council. And any questions that you have, please feel free to give them to us.
Well, it's my recollection that that was in fact part of that, at least part of that was paid.
Thank you.
And one last comment.
Brief.
When was the last time a city manager felt, who's approved all these things, was the last time, the last 30 or 40 years, that healthcare costs have not gone up for four years? Answer me that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing nobody else come forward, we'll go ahead and close public comments, bring it back to city council. One thing I did want to point out is that none of the concerns raised by myself and from what I'm hearing from Councilmember Chafee, or I'm sorry, from Councilmember Whitaker on these contracts, is anything, really has anything to do with the staff that are represented in these MOUs. It is about the process. It's about the nuts and bolts of what goes into these processes, into these discussions, and how the discussion takes shape. And that's my two cents for now. Any council member with any further comments? Councilmember Chafee?
Yes, I would, again, differ with Mr. Whitaker. I think he's mixing apples and oranges. I think we would agree, however, and is a concern of mine at least, those numbers in both columns need to find revenue and must be paid. So, that's, but to say that if we don't have these increases, the other thing would disappear, the things that are not related to the contract changes, is a myth. It won't disappear. It will be there, and will have to be paid, and we'll have to find that revenue no matter what. So, yeah, it's a lot of revenue, but I think we need to keep up with, to be competitive with other departments and other places so we can recruit good people to serve on our force. So, I would move the item.
And I'll second it.
Okay. There is a motion to second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Abstain? All right. Thank you.
And just for the record, this is not an adoption. It's just at the next hearing. It's the first reading.
Can we get to do this again?
Okay. Next item, number seven, Sixth Amendment to Disposition and Development Agreement.
And I would just start this by saying, I'm not sure if the other council feel they need a lengthy presentation on this because unfortunately, we've been dealing with this for many years, so.
I could just pretty much just say, this is similar to the Fullerton Transportation Center situation with the ENA that you guys approved in, I think, June or July. This all relates to the redevelopment dissolution process. We're still at the very end with the long-range property management plan. We hope to have it all resolved. We got indications from the Department of Finance that this will be resolved by January 1st, 2016. And we are taking the necessary steps to ensure that does happen. So, the current agreement, which was part of the Fifth Amendment, which was adopted in March of 2015, expires December 31st, 2015. So, of course, the developer is asking for an extension to December 31st of 2016, one year, to let the DOF approve the long-range property management plan. Therefore, they're pretty much, we're free and clear to proceed as necessary and come back to the council at a future date to deal with whatever the development will now entail. So, is that quick enough or simplistic enough?
Makes perfect sense.
Okay.
Well, I have some questions. I'm wondering why the time is so long. It takes a year and a half after the year to create this so-called, whatever you call this mystery amendment is.
Yeah. It's in the agreement, because there's been so many delays, we didn't give it a number. We just called it the Future Amendment. And this Future Amendment was kind of going to clean up all of the stuff that has occurred over the last few years, such as what is the new project going to be? Because the project kind of entailed certain things that are no longer possible, such as the expansion and the acquisition of the properties where Purple Yoga is right now. That's not going to happen. We're looking at mainly the parking lots and everything. So, there's a lot of things that have to be redesigned, scaled down, scaled up. I don't know. I mean, that's still up to the developers as to what they want to do and work with the planning staff to come up with a good plan. But there needs to be time to kind of go back to the drawing board and see what will work and what will be acceptable to the community.
Well, why can't that be done sooner if you add all this up? It's like two and a half years.
Well, they're not going to turn on the spigot to develop something that may not actually happen. I mean, I can't see them going through the costs of hiring an architect until they know that, hey, this is a potential now. Because if the Department of Finance forced the city to sell that property as initially indicated in AB 26 and AB 1484, then they would be stuck with the costs, I'm assuming. But I mean, I could let the developer that's here tonight, they can speak on behalf of that. I don't want to put any words in their mouths and everything.
Well, it looks like we expect to hear back from the Department of Finance by the end of this year?
Yeah. We're pretty much, I'm kind of greasing the wheels with them. We're talking with them. We have a dialogue with them. Finally, they're very receptive. They understand that they need to get a complete, not just for our city, but many other cities that are involved in this process. So, everybody's optimistic that, more so than in the past four years, I've been optimistic that this will be ended by December 31st.
And if that approval is received of the management plan by that date, would that year and a half start at that point?
No, no. We could give a set date. I mean, if you want it to start, that's why the year and a half is for the closing. The Future Amendment is for December 31st, 2016. So, if they, if the DOF came on New Year's Eve and said, yes, here's your letter, your property management plan is approved, then they would have a year till December 31st. The Fifth Amendment, if you recall, had a thing where it said the earlier of two dates, one year from the approval of the long-range property management plan or December 31st, 2015. Well, in this way, I mean, it doesn't really make sense because there's only, you know, two months till December 31st, 2015. So, and we anticipate it not to be approved, you know, any time sooner than probably 2015. So, I mean, December 15th of 2015. So, that language, we're just saying, if we want the council, they can give them just the straight year and then.
Okay. Well, I think I understand that. But wasn't this project chosen, or these developers chosen as a result of requests for proposals?
That was, yeah, back in the day, I think it was like 2004, when the RFP came out. And the initial DDA was approved in 2006. Obviously, there's been five amendments since then. Three of them had to deal with the design concept. The last two had to deal with extensions due to the redevelopment dissolution process.
As I remember, the RFP, it was to provide for-sale housing.
That is correct.
And I would not like to see deviation from that. There's some reference here to apartment rental possibility.
Yeah. I mean, everything's kind of up in the air in terms of what. I mean, I, again, I don't want to speak for the developer and they're willing, they could come down here and talk about what type of options they're maybe looking at. But, you know, rental initially was entitled as for-ownership condo townhomes. But then the economy went bad in terms of the housing market from 2009 to, didn't really, it didn't really come back for the condo market, and it still is kind of stagnating compared to the single-family market. So, I'm not sure if that's a possibility, and I can't.
Well, I would trust my concern if it comes back as a apartment project.
Fair enough.
There are other opportunities. You say, go up or go down. I'd say go up, making up for the property you didn't get. And I think a better product type, if you're looking at that, would be a Class A office building. Because what happens there, you would draw daytime business of the downtown, hopefully with a high class of clientele that could spend some money. It also means the parking would be used during the daytime and then freed up during the evening for use for other businesses in downtown that have evening enterprises. But if you have any type of housing project, well, then, they come home. And when the parking is most needed, it isn't. So, I would plant those seeds for consideration, but particularly that I would be loath to see an apartment rental project come back.
Fair enough. Understood.
Okay. Any other questions of council?
Charles, the original approval was almost 10 years ago, and we've had all these circumstances occur since then, including the Great Recession and everything else. I've been on this council for about half this time, and I've seen many renewals come before us. I just, I don't know at what point you decide that this really may not even resemble what the original concept was. And the reason I say that is I know the council that did initially approve this was looking at a public benefit of parking, a parking offset, because the city would be losing a fair amount of surface parking from those two lots in the process. Since then, we've even had the SOCO parking lot there created. So, I think this much passage of time, so many changes, I believe finally, if this developer does act on this proposal, it may be very far from what the original approval entailed. So, I just, I question the fellow members of council, at what point do we pull the plug on something like this? And I certainly am not in favor of perpetually extending this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Okay. At this time, we'll open up the public comments. Anybody wishing to speak on item number seven, come forward. First speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Seaborn and council. My name is Jane Rans. I had sent, not till late this afternoon, an attachment to an email to the council. I don't know whether or not you received it about transfer development rights. So, Fullerton is at a nexus between increased density of downtown Fullerton and preservation of open space at Coyote Hills. Currently, Fullerton is on a path to high-density development and urban sprawl simultaneously. This is not good planning. Fullerton residents may be able to suffer the impacts of one type of development, but not both. High-density development is opposed by residents mainly because of unalleviated concerns about the impacts of increased traffic and the resounding question, where's the water going to come from? Likewise, the next two major complaints about the development of Coyote Hills, following the primary issue of the loss of open space, are again, traffic and water. So, which is the lesser of two unfortunate paths, two inevitable paths that Fullerton must inevitably tread? Whether Fullerton can be a lot smarter about planning the downtown development so as to keep the city moving through improved public transportation, save our streets for pedestrians and bicyclists, and improving, or excuse me, and providing grocery stores and other necessities within walking distance to downtown residences is yet to be seen. But I must say, it is far easier to plan a sustainable development than to ever hope to regain natural open space in West Coyote Hills once it has been built upon. So, if something has got to give, then I'm in favor of preservation. The city owns property downtown at the Fullerton Transportation Center and the parking lots on the north and south sides of the 100 block of West Amridge. The Fullerton Transportation Center already has a specific plan in place that would allow for high-density development on both the city-owned parking lots as well as, excuse me, the city-owned parking lots as well as the surrounding privately-held property. The city has anticipated some development at the West Amridge property through the long-languishing Pelican Lang project, whose extension is being considered tonight. So, I am respectfully asking that the council, acting as a successor agency to the Fullerton Redevelopment Agency, to end the agreement with Pelican Lang, then follow through with a specific plan for downtown, separated from the downtown core and corridor specific plan, and lead the way to development under the Fullerton Transportation Center specific plan by entering into talks with Chevron Pacific Coast Homes regarding a transfer of development rights from West Coyote Hills to downtown Fullerton, essentially both these areas, including the Lang property area. So, this will avoid the takings argument that has so long languished as a pall over the council's decisions regarding the preservation of Coyote Hills. Tonight, you have an opportunity to be bold and make a difference.
Let me wrap up, please.
Allow the disposition and development agreement with Pelican Lang to expire. Nine years is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay. We'll close public comments, bring it back to council. At this time, I think it would be fair to ask if the developer would like to come forward and make any statements, either answer questions or if you feel there's something you need to say. something you need to say.
Good evening. My name's Preston Underdown with the Richmond Group, and, um, we'd like to just say thank you for, for hearing this and let you know that, um, we're committed to working actively with staff and city to, um, continue this process and create a project that we can all be very proud of. It's an A-plus location, and we desire to create an A-plus project that's compatible with the community, and it's something that we can all be proud of for many, many years. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions at council?
No, I'd get, uh, this started by saying that I would move to approve the Sixth Amendment to the disposition and development agreement with Pelican Lang Fullerton LLC and authorize the city manager to execute the document and take all actions reasonably necessary to implement the Sex, Sixth Amendment.
I'll second that.
Okay, there is a motion to second. Any further discussion? Okay.
Uh, I actually do have just a couple of comments. In the past, I have, um, voted against these extensions for numerous reasons, all generally coming back to, um, the way RDA has been, um, used as a tool to further delay. I think there are certain things that some developers can do. Um, I don't know this developer, um, but it's frustrating that, um, uh, there hasn't been progress, not just on this, but on all of the properties, at least, um, some movement. And I think there are things that can be done, even though, um, RDA still has it tied up. Anyways, with that, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And abstain? All right, thank you. With that, we'll move to, uh, item number eight, modification of tow ordinance rates and contracts.
Good evening, Mayor Seaborn, members of the city council. Imitai, your deputy city attorney.
Well, I would enjoy a presentation. I don't know that we need one.
No.
I do not?
I do not.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, uh, this is, uh, a regular item, uh, number eight. Anybody wishing to speak on it can come forward. If not, we'll, uh, close the public comments, okay? We will close the public comments, bring it back to council. Uh, is there any discussion questions? A motion?
I'll move the recommendation.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? And, uh, please note, uh, council, or, uh, Mayor Proton Fitzgerald has stepped out. And, um, okay.
And I will read the title of the ordinance. An ordinance of the city council, the city of Fullerton, California, modifying section 3.74.060 of chapter 3.74 of title three, Regulation of Activities of the Fullerton Municipal Code Regarding Police Initiated Tow Operations.
Okay, very well. All right, as we look to adjourn, uh, adjourn this meeting, uh, our next Tuesday, uh, our next council meeting is Tuesday, November 17th, 2015, um, here at 6:30. And, uh, we will, as has already been mentioned, have a pretty full schedule. Of course, what, one of the, uh, big items is West Coyote Hills' appeal. Uh, we'll hear the, uh, appeal and, um, uh, we'll do that on the 17th. And with that, we are adjourned.